Chairman, you're left.
Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm Chair of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the DC Housing Authority, being held today, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing, and the board is here in person. The time is now one oh four PM. As we do at the beginning of each meeting, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to allow for personal reflection. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome you to the first meeting of two thousand and twenty-four. We're expecting big things in two thousand and twenty-four. We have a new executive director who's assembling a stellar team of experts, and we're hoping to see some big changes in two thousand and twenty-four and improvements to our operations and our efficiency. And we, as the board, will certainly be holding the executive director and staff accountable for making those changes and improvements. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. So today is our regular meeting, so we've invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website. For those who would just like to view the meeting, can do so live via the DHA website, which is linked to our Facebook page. The Board of Commissioners welcomes public input on matters of concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of decorum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak and that you do not use the chat to comment when it's not your time to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct, loud, threatening, or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting. Serious or repeated violation of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future meetings. But we do really appreciate your interest in the matters before us today, and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call to make sure that we have a quorum.
Thank you, Chairman. Denise Blackson? Rosa Burbidge? Leroy Clay?
Here.
Jim Dickerson?
Here.
Ronnie Harris? Katrina Jones? Melissa Lee?
Present.
Christopher Murphy?
Present.
Jennifer Reese?
Present.
Thank you. Stella?
Present.
Chairman, you have?
Call me.
Chairman Ray Skinner?
Here.
Sorry about that. We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like for the commissioners to consider the minutes of both the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting and the annual meeting, which also took place on December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, absolute motion to approve both the minutes of the December thirteenth meeting and the minutes of the annual meeting.
Motion? Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is stand approved as presented. Okay, this time we're going to move on to our executive director's report, and I'm going to call on Executive Director Keith Pettigrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy New Year to everybody. We haven't seen each other since December, right? Officially. Chairman Skinner's comment, happy Valentine's Day. Take a lot of all the ladies, gentlemen, excluded. So it's been a, man, hundred and five days. Just like four years. Oh.
Let's count.
Yeah, I've always counted. But it's been an extremely productive and busy hundred and five days, I will say. A lot of things you guys probably don't see because it's a lot of work behind the scenes, but I feel good about where we are and where we're headed. If the residents are excited, we've been walking all over the properties, meeting with the residents, walking with them to identify concerns with units, security and safety, as well as talk about ideas of how we can improve our services to them. So I think that we're starting to rebuild that trust, which is extremely important, and the fact that I'm out there with them all of the time, I think, is extremely important. But before I dive into some other, some numbers and things that I have for you guys, we have some new team members to introduce in the room. We have Heather Mueller, House of New CFO. And then we have Chief Mike Reese.
Thank you, everyone, everybody.
So we're excited about the team that we're building, as the chairman sort of alluded to. There are obviously going to be more changes as we move forward in terms of continuing to build capacity, not only at the leadership level, but at the frontline level as well. So the goal right now is just to sort of try to start to chip away at rebuilding the culture, establish a sense of urgency, and more importantly, providing and establishing a sense of providing excellent work to our residents and customer service. So as time goes on, you'll see it. As I told the residents when I meet with them, the resident council said, listen, I said, you know, I had a management expectations here. I mean, we're excited to be here, but you know, it's not going to happen overnight. But the fact that I'm front and center and accountable and meeting with them on a regular basis, I think that they really appreciate that, and they see that they feel like there's a new change in leadership. So we're extremely excited about the future as we go forward. So I want to dive into a couple of things with you guys to share with regard to where we are. As you know, utilization is one of the big pieces of concern for not only you all as a board, the residents in general, but also HUD. And so we moved very quickly in the beginning of the year to bring on contractors to be able to start turning more units because that's really what it was about, is about volume. And so the goal is to turn a hundred units a month, and we figured we'll net about sixty-five based on move outs and attrition, but the goal was to turn a hundred units a month. So for the month of January, we turned a hundred and twenty-two units.
Right. Congratulations.
And so, and we're humming along for the month of February. If you see in the table here, I have an executive summary, shows the December utilization seventy-three point eight, January seventy-four point two. And today I asked Ms. Ethan to look at the system, the HUD system that tracks our pick, that our utilization rate for public housing, and it's up to seventy-five point one seven. So we're slowly but surely inching up. We had several, what do you call, open houses over the weekend. They were very well attended. Over a hundred and something folks came out to look at various units that we had already rehabbed. So we've been very aggressive about marking these units and pre-leasing as well. So I think you're going to see that number start to rise every month with regards to the number of applicants, but also the units that we're turning to match them up with the units that we have.
So the people that came out, were these people off the waiting list or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, and they were excited too, just to be out, see new, brand-new units, I mean, not brand-new units, but rehab units that look really, really good. So I'm upset because I told us to have to take pictures so that they could see not only people moving in the units with their keys, but also just to show you guys the units. So in the future, we're going to put a link on the webpage so you guys can see the progress, and then the public can see the progress of these units that we're turning. And more importantly, the smiles on people's faces now that they're being leased up and they're being housed. So we're extremely excited about that.
So you indicated a small tick-up over between, I guess, December, January, now into February. So what is your expectation by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, since you were talking about?
See, I knew you were going down there, man. Ideally, the goal, well, obviously, the ultimate goal is to get to a hundred percent, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent, but that's not going to happen in this year. I think we have to manage expectations. We're looking maybe somewhere in the eighty, eighty percent range. We look, I think we shoot for eighty, eighty-five percent, eighty-five percent, and we're at seventy-five now. And I don't see that going down unless something happens, I mean, I don't want to jinx myself, but the fact that we're turning units and we got people applying for these units is a very positive sign. So, and I think probably about the end of February, end of March, we're going to see it tick up again.
Are there specific properties that this round is kind of focusing on, or is it sort of sprinkled throughout the portfolio?
Sprinkled throughout the portfolio. So what we're doing is, when we identify folks on the waitlist, obviously, the units that we turn at first are the units that fit the composition of families. Because that's the easiest way to do it and get them in quickly. So, but it's all throughout the time before.
Well, I go by the Park Morton off of Georgia Avenue every day. I live right up there close. And it's been great seeing that thing move along and come up out of the ground. And, you know, it's not too far, you know, it's not too far from being delivered, ready to put people back in. So that's been great to see that every day I go by there.
If there is an opportunity to comment on your report, when you started out, you talked about a change in the culture, and I just wanted to reflect back that I have seen the change in that culture. I get a lot of emails, not just the regular emails that all the other commissioners are copied on when residents are disgruntled, but also from the homeless services perspective, when people are going through the voucher application process. And very concretely, one of the changes that I saw soon after you started is that people are not just acknowledging receipt of the email, but the conversations that they're having, they're reflecting that back. They're giving timelines for when they're going to address the issue. And I especially want to shout out the Ombuds person. I believe it's Mr. Wayne Waller. He has been absolutely responsive and helping to ensure that, like, situations are addressed. So I definitely see the change in the culture from the frontline perspective, from the emails that I'm getting, so I wanted to thank you for them.
Thank you. I mean, yeah, a long way to go, but it's a start.
It's a start.
Yeah, it really is. So just some basic other numbers, just for context purposes, we, you're responsible for eight thousand units, but only seventy-three sixty-eight available because we pulled some offline, was a substantial rehab. And that's allowed, that's part of the tick uptick as well, lease ups as well as students coming offline because they need substantial rehab. Other than that, this is just basic information. And as we move forward into future board meetings, we're going to refine the board book and the summary to try to come up with a consistent format, just so you guys know, but we're still in that phase of trying to feel you guys out and feel the team out in terms of what we provide, how we provide it. You'll see there'll be more consistency in the reports as we go forward, just so you know. The voucher side of the house, which is the other side of utilization, that we met with HUD last year, December, talked about the voucher side of utilization, which is going to take a little longer to see it uptick in vouchers, obviously, because of the timeframes that it takes for us to, number one, issue a voucher and then find units and hold ball of wax with the rafters. But we're excited about, we have a plan, number one, with a plan that the staff has reviewed that they believe is doable. And we're going to get started very quickly with regard to lease-up activities. One of the things that concerned me, as I've been doing my assessment of various departments and challenges in the voucher program, is that we lose a lot of time in the beginning of voucher lease-up with regard to documentation being gathered appropriately and that kind of stuff. And that has a lot to do with the fact that people are teleworking and they're communicating their email with some of our residents who may not be technological savvy, they missed some things, and some of them may not have printers or computers or set stuff back. So it is a huge disconnect there. And so one of the things I'm looking to do now, we're looking at eleven-seventy to have that rehab and bring the staff back in-house. I need staff. People need to be able to see my staff and come and see them with their documents in hand, so they can.
What is eleven-seventy?
It's one of ours, the Horizon House, but we have office space there, and it's been, it hasn't been utilized in a long time. And I was surprised that it wasn't utilized, but I see why now, but we're going to probably have a rehab and either bring them back there or find a space to lease up, depending upon how extensive the damage is in terms of the building itself. Because it hasn't been used in a while, but I know last time I was here, it was office space, but now nothing's been done with it over the years, and so a lot of cleaning up, a lot of that kind of stuff. So, but the point is that I need to get staff back in the office so that we can better service the residents with regards to them bringing stuff in and seeing somebody and asking questions. Because a lot of stuff gets lost in translation via email. I mean, they may, they may forget to bring in a social security card for one of the children that's on the lease, right? That kind of stuff, and you lose a lot of time. But if you can sit with them right there, go through the packet, identify what they need, that speeds up the whole process. So we're looking at other ways too, to push that process along. One of the things that puts my attention was, we might want to start thinking about doing a review, but it's earlier on in the process. So that way, when you're dealing with the landlord, you'll know early on whether or not this is going to work for them, and in that way, you can move on as opposed to doing it in the back end of the process and then having it drag on and drag on and that kind of stuff. So we're looking at various ways to improve your utilization up and get rock and roll in that aspect of the house as well.
So I know we had some glitches a few weeks ago with the inspection process. Has that been resolved? And how we're doing on inspection?
So far, it's been resolved, you know, so, but the system would always go down again. And so we're looking to find another system to be frank with you, that's going to be more reliable as well, but also bring on more help on the inspection side. So we're going to be putting together RFP to get some more inspection help because we believe that we need it in that area, number one. There's a lot of activity going on, you know, a lot of different areas, a lot of different avenues. And I find too that the more we have, the better off we're going to be. I think it's going to raise the level of performance of our folks, number one. But number two, we need it to move stuff along a lot faster. And again, to rebuild that confidence in the community and the public because they don't have any confidence in it right now. So I need to find ways to rebuild that confidence and establish a certain level of performance that's expected going forward.
So you mentioned the rent reasonableness. Are you satisfied to date with how that's working, this new, with the housing dot com? And what kind of feedback are you getting from?
You get, you get, you got all kinds of feedback, right? But we're pretty satisfied with the circumstances. It's funny because if you guys saw that article that was written in the city paper about how some landlords are gaming the system by creating fictitious properties that may skew. So we had a conversation with HUD about that. We were like, listen, hundreds of housing builders use affordablehousing.com. So it's not just DC, and people game systems all of the time. We can't, we can't account for every various issue, but we feel good about what we see in affordablehousing.com. And as a matter of fact, we've run over four thousand requests since it was implemented back in July. And there's a chart, the chart shows that most of the renters, except for one, have all come back lower than what landlords have requested. So to me, it's working. So we're starting to get some consistency there with the system that we have.
Especially because I had asked for the rent reasonableness numbers, and I appreciate the level of detail that's provided here. We need something similar to what you are reflecting back relative to rent reasonableness around the voucher process. And I want to reflect back, like, I'm really happy to hear that you have a plan. I would very much like for the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services to, like, be fully briefed on that plan. I think, you know, I have a lot of opinions about that process and what we need to see. I get a fair amount of detail from the perspective of the Department of Human Services. What's missing for me in order to piece it all together is the data that's available at the Housing Authority on each step of the process, how long each step is taking, what are the major roadblocks and barriers associate, like, what are the paper forms and process that's associated with the different steps from the perspective of the Housing Authority?
And so we had a call, just so you know, with Director Zylinger earlier today, to talk about a meeting, to talk about this process in general.
And again, for the public who may not know, who is Director Zylinger?
Oh, she's the director of the Department of Human Services. And we had planned to have that meeting anyway, to talk about this process because I need to truly understand what we're responsible for, what they're responsible for. And so the meeting is tomorrow, so we're going to sit down and talk about the various challenges so we can iron them all out. I do know that one of the things she pointed out just was, she believes that it takes too long to process eligibility, and it is a backlog. So that's one of the reasons why I'm going to sit in on a meeting tomorrow too as well, to understand what it is we're doing, so we can approve upon it. So we're excited about the meeting. I think we're going to get this worked out relatively quickly, and then we can share the information with you all at the subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, that particular step is an average of two months. If you can expedite that, that's like sixty days that we'll be able to shave off of the timelines for processing vouchers. So.
That's the being the DHS.
Eligibility process.
No, once DHS completes the package and submits an application form for a person, until we get to an approval and voucher issuance, like, we're talking about an average of fifty-nine days. That's, you know.
Yeah, we'll take it again.
Yep.
We'll get it fixed.
Okay.
I think that's pretty much it, unless you all have any questions.
Any questions, any other questions?
Thing I want to mention too, sorry. So we're doing a lot of cleaning up in the PIC system.
PIC system, remember, we're talking to the.
Physical inventory.
Oh, gosh.
Come on, help me. That's the reason why I hired you.
Over twenty years, I asked me twenty years ago.
But it's a physical inventory system that we load up our, yeah, for HUD, that, you know, tracks not only the public housing side of utilization and our assets, but also the voucher side of the house. So obviously, as I mentioned in the previous board meetings, that we have some data integration, but we're cleaning it up now, just so you know. So we expect to have all of that stuff done. I told the contractors I want it done by last week, right?
Yeah, you said by last week, and I wasn't realistic, so thirty days, sixty days. So we're looking at a ninety-day timeline, so they'll clean up a little bit each month, and a lot of it is in HUD's court. So if we put the errors into the HUD system, we have to wait for the HUD employees to clear them out.
I have sort of a, I'm trying to get my head around it, question on rent reasonableness. So in the appendix to the report, I believe, it talks about, first of all, my overall comment is, from some of the numbers I've seen, I'm really impressed by how much you are accelerating processing rent reasonable requests or rent reasonable checks, as it were. In the appendix, it says, it lists two hundred and sixty-seven for January of twenty-four as the total rent increase requests received. So this is just, this is in the appendix part, the two hundred and sixty-seven total rent increase requests received. But then I was having a little bit of a hard time squaring that with in the ED's report earlier and under rent reasonable is, it talks about seven hundred and fifty-eight. And I'm guessing it's an apples and oranges thing. I'm guessing those numbers aren't meant to be the same thing. I'm just trying to understand what they are.
Yeah, so Hammer just unmuted. There she goes.
So in the executive director's report, it's all rent reasonableness analysis. So whether it's a rent increase request or a new valuation, so you're right, it's not an apples to apples.
That's great, Hammer. And so the five hundred or so difference is, those are ones that we're proactively checking?
So those are where a request for a tenancy packet would be submitted for somebody that's moving into a new place. So it could be a new voucher holder or a voucher holder that's transferring from one unit to another.
I see. Okay, okay, okay. And then the smaller number are the rent increase requests. And I know requirements have to revisit some of that issue, but that's helpful. Thank you.
So two other points, we're excited to be beating these artists done. So we're going to be catching up, so we should be caught up in June with twenty-three. So we should play and read and smile. And I know, I know that caused all the awesome things, but I remember when you read was like, no, no, this is not, no. So I feel good about where we are with the artists, and the other thing we're going to be doing is, HUD requested us that we run reviews of all of the units that are leased up, and the due date is May thirty-first. So we feel pretty good about the plan we have to get all of those units touched again, run reviews, rent reasonableness, to double-check it all, just so we know what we stand, and so we can get in front of anything that concerns us.
And I think the FY twenty-two audit, we're shooting for April, right?
Yes. Right. Yes.
Trial by fire, Heather.
You're good, heaven?
Yes. But still, we're shooting for the twenty-three by the end of June, so that'll put us back on track.
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this, but when you run these, you said you're doing rent reasonables for all the existing units. So when you run those, if it shows, comes up a lower rent, are you going to ask the landlords to accept a lower rent? What will happen when, once you run those?
Well, we want to see what we get first, and analyze it all, and then we'll decide the game plan going forward. I haven't thought that far with regard to that. And the main thing we're looking for are outliers, how we handle them, we haven't decided that yet. If there's any other questions, that's all for the report for today.
Any other questions from? Okay, thank you, Director Pettigrew, as I said, the board has great expectations.
I can see. I'm getting grabbed by the tail, man, come on.
But I'm sure you're up to the task. Thank you. We really appreciate again what you've done so far, what you've put to the agency in terms of some of the things you already talked about, changing the culture, the momentum, the energy that I see in the staff. And I particularly like the way that you've been going out and meeting with the residents.
Yeah, you took off with us greatly, right?
I went to a couple, I went to a couple with you.
You were with Commissioner Blackson, man, she's out there all the time.
Okay, okay, so the next item on the agenda is resident testimony. And actually, what we're going to do, since we don't have a lot of non-resident folks to testify today, is we're going to combine them. So we'll start first with the resident testimony. And again, everyone has three minutes to testify, and you can talk about whatever issue is on your mind, including, you have any comments on the resolutions that were presented today, that will be presented, that will go on the website. Okay?
Perfect, thank you. Commissioner, the first person that's going to testify is Yolanda Thornton. Ms. Thornton, are you on the line? If you are, if you're muted, it is star six. Okay, we can move on. The next person is Rico Vaughn. Rico Vaughn, are you on the line? Okay. The next resident ahead is Natasha Guest. Ms. Guest, are you on the line? Moving forward. Former Commissioner Aquarius Vangosary. Moving forward. Ronald Smith. Mrs. Smith, are you unmute? Star six, please.
Can you hear him now?
We can.
Yes. I just want to testify, I've been on this issue several times about the housing choice vouchers. I've been on a waiting list since January two thousand and six, and I just recently saw persons delivering my housing unit, right, that got these, just been waiting ten, twelve years, and they got their vouchers, and I'm just wondering, what is it this party? You know, I have been unsuccessful in getting any answers to anything. People tell me that if you want to contact me or get back with me or whatever, and then others just tell me that I just have to wait until my name come up, which obviously, I know that. But is there anybody that can help me, or as far as what I'm trying to do? Both myself and my wife have been identified as being disabled, and we need a reasonable accommodation, which we don't have here. And just recently, I was, they're doing work in a building, a green release thing, apartment down here southwest. They're doing work that requires them to use certain chemicals and stuff. Okay, I, my wife rushed me to my primary because my COPD had gotten so bad I couldn't breathe. And I'm on home oxygen as well as Sporevina, a whole lot of those things. And my doctor sent a notification back for me to give it to the onsite manager, which I did. And the request from my doctor was that we would recommend a reasonable accommodation be made for him, including but not limited to his air filter in his apartment. And, you know, I don't know, just in the last month, I think they had two turnovers. And, you know, I don't know, just within the last month, I think they had two turnovers with managers here. But I had an opportunity last night to meet the most recent managers. And I just want to know, you know, what I can expect or, you know, what I should be doing while I'm waiting or whatever. Thank you so much.
Can you just talk a little bit about the status of the voucher waitlist and what your plans are?
So, yeah, we're currently going through the waitlist right now. It's a very old waitlist and we're going through and pulling. So, Mr. Smith, we are pulling people from the waitlist currently. But what I'll have, I'll have Hammer, Jibrizzi reach out to you as well, talk to you about where you are on the list and what the process is and what the status is. But also, I'll have the property management staff reach out to you too with regard to your issues and concerns with regard to your disability, okay?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to come back to, I see we have a former Commissioner Aquarius Vangosary. Star six to unmute.
First and foremost, I would like to salute the residents, especially the residents who are in leadership, present, past, and future. I think it's very important that the Housing Authority on Afro-American history moves to salute our residents and our resident leaders. Today, I have open and closed questions, and my questions are directed to the director. First and foremost, what will be the procedure for DCHA for evictions? It has been brought to my attention as a former commissioner, because I want you to know, I will always be connected with DCHA. I've been there for life. Now, most of you sitting around the table, most likely are probably giving you some information to be successful in making decisions. And one of the decisions I know you have to make, because many residents did receive stimulus money, but there will be some evictions, I'm sure. So that's one question. The other question is eleven thirty-three. Would this director please address whether or not eleven thirty-three was a good deal? And if it was so, tell us why. And if it was not, we need to know. The second question is specifically, it's where I live at, seven hundred twelfth Street Southeast, our rad application. Is it on someone's desk? Or what is the procedure? How will our rad be handled? What is or are there any amendments to that seven hundred rad? I will not be pushed aside, I will have a seat at that table. I'm a force in this town, and I'm going to use my force. I don't appreciate it when it's, and Director Pedigree, I'm asking you to do something with the former resident commissioners. No other, no other director. That's not true. The former director did not acknowledge the resident-elect commissioners. And we need to be knowledgeable. You have, you have too many of us like Geneva Barr, who have started this board as an insult. Please, under your administration, that you fix that internally and for the rest of our duration as a DCHA independent agency. With that said, I've come to a close. I think I've given you enough to think about. And also, I'm putting all commissioners on notice. I am now lobbying, advocating, reaching out to all former commissioners, because we need to start a membership club. And we need to help this Housing Authority to move forward. We're the puzzle and the pieces. And those of you who sit appointed by the mayor, you all may move on. But those who are appointed by the mayor and they're still living in HCVP or public housing, you will one day become a former commissioner, and we need to be, hold ourselves accountable for the yes and no resolutions that we voted on in order to impact policy for our constituents. Thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One more thing, I have to say this, the chief, Chief Moffett, I've just did seventeen years and looking at all of the homicides and the arrests that he really made. So I want to salute the chief. And I want to say, I was locked in the Islamic Center when Ramadan, and I had to call our chief to get us out. So that chief showed me that he knew DC and he knew it well. Saman alaika.
Thank you.
We're going to move forward. Sharon Moon. Ms. Moon, are you on the line? Next, we have Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, can you unmute by using star six? Okay. Next, we have Patricia Bishop.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Ms. Bishop.
Happy Valentine's Day, ladies. I come to y'all with great concern of a situation at two oh three that constantly keeps happening. It is the fact of the hot water issue. We have several problems with this boiler system to where we have hot water in our toilet on our coal side. Then we have no hot water on the hot water side at all. It is a problem throughout the building, not just my unit or individual tenants when they do call and get a control network. A situation that went down, I'm not going to go into details with a contractor, but it is known that this happened. And I am so sick and tired of telling someone to get out of my unit because they are being disrespectful. I hold a position here as the president, and I announce that. But to not have hot water at any given time, to that water on that side is freezing cold, if though you're taking a plunge. People have arthritis and health conditions that cannot take cold showers. A human being should not have to take cold showers here at two oh three. All I'm asking for is the complete information about the boiler, the lines of this hot water, how it's connected and how it's running, and how much it's going to cost the city to pay for it to be correct. And I don't want to keep going through this with the tenants about, I'm doing my best to get the proper people to take care of this. But then for two or three hours, we are back at no hot water. That's not, that's not protocol of any contractor or a person who's supposed to be taking care of this to make sure that we have what we need without me being upset because my tenants are upset throughout the days and the weeks that we are supposed to have proper water at all times. That's what I ask, that's what the tenants that I represent ask of everyone to do what they have to do to make sure this don't keep happening and that we get the proper water. There are other things that's going on, but only one at a time can I take care of. With the help of others and the board, please, sit down with me, give me a conversation so that I can take it back to my residents. Give me in black and white exactly what is the problem, why we are inconvened, and then I can come back with people who sit down with me and tell them what my tenants is responding to. I am tired of my pressure going up. I have a heart problem, and so does my tenants. I care about from the youngest to the oldest. Every situation that we go through here, please show me that you care just as much. Thank you. And once again, Happy Valentine's Day, ladies.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Towns. Ms. Towns, I see you're on the line. Are you unable to unmute? There you are. You have three minutes.
Hello? Hi, how's everybody doing? My name is Donna Towns, and I'm a Park Morton resident. And since twenty seventeen, I've been going through a lot with dealing with the Park Morton managers. And I would like to begin with, since twenty seventeen, I acquired monthly rent charges from May twenty seventeen to March twenty eighteen, and that was when my daughter had moved out. And I had to wait patiently for Ms. Barnes to return to the property, and I did so. So my daughter was actually removed from the property on March first, twenty eighteen. And Ms. Barnes and I had an agreement that the rent charges, the ten-month rent charge would be reversed. I thought it happened when I received the interim change report, which stated my daughter's effective date, move-out date is March first, twenty seventeen. So I thought it was done. So now Ms. Barnes, Ms. Diallo become Park Morton manager in August, September, twenty eighteen. At that time, I had a ceiling collapse in my bathroom. So I lived, and it was like mold and everything for a long period of time. But I'm going to get back, when Ms. Diallo became manager, she should have reviewed all the tenants' accounts. And had she done so, the outstanding balance on my account should have been brought to my attention by a non-payment of rent notice or something like that, or something to make me aware. So then, so I'm going to move forward. So February twenty nineteen, I was recertified for the recertification package. At that time, that was the second opportunity for Ms. Diallo to bring it to my attention. And had she brought the monthly, the ten-month rent charges to my attention, I would have been within the grievance period of March first, twenty eighteen to March twenty nineteen to address the balance on my account. So I'm still trying to get that issue resolved. Now, I want to move back to Ms. Diallo. So in twenty eighteen, the ceiling collapsed and everything. I lived in that condition up until March, I mean, up until May twenty nineteen. On May thirty, Ms. Diallo promised me that if I signed the lease, my property was going to be transported upstairs to apartment thirty-three. That didn't happen. DCHA took possession of my whole prop, of my property on May thirty-first. And then I was not allowed back in the apartment to try to recover anything. And this is during the lead removal period. So I would just like, I would just like to end, I would like my rent backdated. And I also would like to receive the voucher, which I was awarded, but was taken away from me because Ms. Diallo didn't do March twenty nineteen recertification package. I will send you documentations so you can better understand and what I'm talking about or what I'm trying to express. And I thank you all for your time, and I look forward to hearing from someone regarding these issues in which I've endured since twenty seventeen. Thank you very much.
Towns, you will definitely hear from someone.
Thank you. We'll come back to Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, I believe you're on the line. Can you unmute yourself, star six? Okay, Chairman, so we're going to move on. There you are. Okay, perfect, go ahead, Ms. Matthews.
Unfortunately, I was, the phone got disconnected, but that's neither here nor there. We're here together now. I want to say Happy Valentine's Day to everybody, first and foremost. And just to know that nothing is constant but changing, we all know that as well. I want to talk about the new director right now. Because I have been in public housing, when I first came into public housing, it took twenty-one years for me to be off that waiting list. And thank God I had a job and I was able to pay, you know, regular rent and all of that. And it came at a time in which I needed, so I'm still thankful and grateful for the Housing Authority. But the directors, this one is a little different, I think. Well, I'm not going to say a little, because little means, you know. But I see where he takes out more time to deal with the residents, listen to what they say. He came into a nightmare, and we've lived the nightmare. So I see where he's trying to do a lot of different things. And I know a lot of times it's about policies, procedures, rules and regulations, and how things are so divided, but yet they're in the same organization. I mean, you got to go through this one to get to this, and get to that, and get to that. Sometimes balls get dropped, and then we get the aftermath of it. And like I said, have to live through it. So I see a big difference and change there. I just hope that everybody, we can work together better in two thousand and twenty-four because everybody don't want the headaches or to go home and try to figure it out or have to worry about, you know, what's next and how that's going to work. We can all make a big difference in two thousand and twenty-four and stop saying the DC Housing Authority nightmare, the lawsuits and all of that stuff. And to get on the phone and talk about the same thing that that young lady just got off the phone speaking about also in reference to people who have ADA requests to stop making that also a nightmare. I've ventured those nightmares as well. I can see a difference, like I said, in what everyone is trying to do when it comes to Moffett, Chief Moffett. I heard Aquarius, hi, Aquarius, Happy Valentine's Day. But I would like this new director to also be a part of the board meetings, the monthly meeting to give a report. I asked about it when Moffett was here. If he didn't do it once, he might have did it twice, but then it just went away. The new board members, I would like to start as the director was also speaking about was to get back to work. I mean, we tell them, we tell them working from home and all of those type of stuff. Some of our COVID is still out there, but we still got to live. We still got to be person to person. We got to know these individuals that we're talking to. I have a clue of none of y'all. I don't get on Facebook, I don't Zoom in, I'd rather call in and speak and that be that. So you need to be considerate of everybody. I would like to have as a Valentine's Day gift, that we, it's not enough, but to get our two minutes back when we speak. Also, the fact that we don't have enough time to speak, as I'm rushing now with a thousand thoughts in my head and can't get it all out. But being as though the director comes out and we've had conversations, and he's going to be meeting with the people on the property so that they don't have to hear, oh, well, somebody's going to call you or somebody's going to get back with you. But that person that has that problem, it could be a thousand other people who have that problem, and you're just addressing that one person's problem. So by him coming out to the property, that will, everybody's answers will be, questions will be answered. And you're not just helping one, you're helping many. Ms. Dugan, so I'm thinking that if he does what he says he's going to do, and we all work together to change the way that things have been being done, and he's blessed with these different disabilities and making us stress out even more, that we could all each help one another and resolve these issues a little better. And I don't know what you're going to do far while this apologies, the procedures, the rules and regulations, because some of them really don't make any sense. And a lot of times, we might need to just sit down and go over this. And I feel as though that the residents should play a big part of it. Y'all meet all the time, we only meet once a month, we only have five minutes to talk about whatever it is. And that, to me, is unfair to the people who are going through these nightmares at their places. And I need, I feel as though in a way, that's like being disrespectful. And to also not take out the time to start having these meetings on the property and not be trying to rush off or be in a place or space where somebody's telling you, oh, well, that person is not there or whatever. Everybody should be on speed call so the questions could be answered, so you don't have to wait a month for Sundays to be able to get a result. And that's all I got to say. I got more, but I'll just deal with the DCH staff on that. And because I think it'll work through them just as well. And y'all have a nice weekend.
Okay, we're moving on to our non-residents. April Davis. Okay, we're moving on. Isaiah Moon. The next person we're going to move on to is Hosanna Simpson. Moving forward, Daniel Del Pellego.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Daniel Del Pellego, I work with Empower.
I work with Empower DC. I wanted just, and I'll preface this by saying I have had a, we have had, myself and some residents have had some conversations with Director Pettigrew already on this, but wanted to just put it on the record, you know, that we are still looking for clearer right of return language and direction, especially obviously for properties that are redeveloping. One issue that I know recently came up that was discussed, and I really appreciated the way this resident put it. You know, we've heard of right to return, but we also want to ensure that we have a right to stay because often what happens in a lot of these redevelopments is people are moved before the redevelopment happens and they are unsure about their right of return. So just wanted to flag that and put that on the record. Look forward, Director, as we spoke, to continuing our work on that. I wanted to spend the last minute here. I recently received the notice from a former Berry Farm resident who received a letter from POA saying that their, their storage, POA had been paying for storage for some residents and that that would be up by September of this year. While I think residents are thankful for that, you know, the development is nowhere, at least in, from what we know, near to happening where folks can return and will not, no longer need those services. So I just wanted to put that out there that, you know, it seems that this was not caused by the residents. Residents have been waiting for return. And obviously, many had to downsize when they relocated. So that's gonna create some undue stress for folks who are either, their choices are, you know, lose your stuff, pay it yourself, which obviously adds a financial burden. So wanted to flag that and just say thank you. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chris Williams. Mr. Williams, I see you.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. My name is Chris Williams. I am a community leader in the Southwest neighborhood and work very closely with our resident council leaders in our many public housing communities. I wanted to touch upon several things. The first that I want to start with is remarks from Director Pettigrew earlier concerning reliance on affordablehousing.com. While they do have a HUD compliant tool on rent reasonableness, there are many concerns about the software that they use, Rent Watch, because it doesn't account for what the market can actually yield. So as you know or may know, affordablehousing.com allows landlords to go in and post rent, right? So in that way, they are in control of market rent. And we know that there are efforts to inflate those rents. And so if the Housing Authority relies on that inflation without accounting for what actually people pay, then we get into a situation where the Housing Authority is really having a major impact on rising housing costs throughout the city, not just for those participating in a DCHA program, but also for renters like myself who are not a part of, you know, a voucher program but are paying market rent. And so I really want to push the Housing Authority to look at that issue because it is not clear that Rent Watch, which is a part of affordablehousing.com, accounts for that. The second issue that I would like to raise is around Greenleaf. I'm hearing a lot of great positive feedback about the new director and about the new administration within the Housing Authority. I'm very excited about that because as a community leader, I've been very frustrated with the Housing Authority, particularly their mistreatment of residents, particularly the slum boarding that has been allowed to fester. And I'm really excited about the potential change in that. But I also would like to sort of support resident leaders such as Ms. Pat, who spoke earlier, about getting these work orders done. That's important to me as an ally. I think it's important to the D.C. community writ large. And we really would like to see those contractors more accountable because they come out, they bill, and then the problem resurfaces, you know, within days, weeks. And so how do we get these things permanently done? And so those are the major things that I'd like to talk about. And I'll send a follow-up about the Greenleaf redevelopment and the concerns, not just from former DCHA staff about procurement violations, but concern about the process and the impact on Southwest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Next, we have William Jordan. Okay, I'll move forward. Craig London. So Commissioner, that concludes our testimony for today.
Okay. Thank all of you who took the time to prepare before the board today. And, you know, we've taken notes on your comments. And as appropriate, we will follow up. Okay, the next item on the agenda is committee reports. So again, for the general public, the board has four standing committees. Capital Projects Committee, which is chaired by Commissioner Murphy and deals with issues around the redevelopment, repositioning of our assets. Committee on Budget Audit and Finance, which is chaired by Commissioner Reed. And as the name implies, it deals with all issues, relates to the budget, our annual budget, HUD budget and district budget, works with our auditors, outside auditors, do the annual audit for the agency and deals with our Office of Audits and Investigations. Then we have a Resident Services Committee, which is the name implies, deals with issues related to our public housing residents. And that's chaired by Commissioner Blackson. And finally, we have a Committee on Operations and Administration, which deals with a number of issues, including public housing occupancy, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, procurement, ACA, IT, and again, a host of other issues. And that committee is chaired by Commissioner Jones. So today, I'm gonna ask each of the committee chairs to give a brief overview of their last committee meeting and any issues that the board needs to be aware of today. I will say, I'll start out by saying Commissioner Blackson is not available today. So we're not gonna have a report from the Resident Services Committee. But I'm gonna ask Commissioner Murphy to start with the Capital Projects Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We spent the bulk of our most recent Capital Projects meeting discussing the procurement resolution that we're gonna consider today. And I don't need to go into a lot of detail about that right now because I think we'll have a chance to talk about it when we get to that resolution. But I think our goal there was to really make sure we were doing our due diligence on that resolution. The staff is asking for some flexibility. And we wanted to really kind of stress test that ask and tighten it up a little bit. And I think we've ended up in a good place, which we'll get to shortly. We also, we've spent some time developing a one-pager that really clarifies the responsibilities and portfolio of the committee. And I know each of the other committees is doing the same thing. And I think it's been a helpful exercise to help us get our head around what each committee is responsible for so that we're very, very clear on what we're doing as well as what other committees are doing. We have begun work with, with the very capable help of David Cordiella that the director's brought on to help us think about a portfolio of repositioning strategy. And so we've begun sort of putting our toe in the water of what that process is gonna look like. And David is just such a pro. I think we're really lucky that we've got him to work with on this. And so looking forward to his counsel as we move forward on that process. And that is really it. I guess I do want to say one thing about Urgent Needs Campaign. And just, I want to make sure the public understands this. You know, each month, we are really looking at the progress that the Urgent Needs Campaign is making. And one of the questions that we're asking the staff each month is, do you have everything you need? Are there holdups in the system that we can help untangle that allow you to move even faster? And so, you know, I know sometimes things go to the CFO's office. CFO has to provide critical improvements. And so one of the things we've said to the staff before, and I will say again, you know, if you guys hit moments where you feel like you're hitting a brick wall or you have something stuck on somebody's desk or whatever, just continue to let us know. And I know Commissioner Clay is more than happy to work with his colleagues and CFO to make sure that we're all moving as fast as we can to deliver for our residents, because that's our goal. And then one just happy moment of celebration. I think this might even happen when we were meeting. The Court of Appeals announced a decision very favorable to the Park Morton redevelopment. So Phase Two of Park Morton will now be allowed to proceed. And we're happy about that and glad to have it behind us. And then finally, I know we've got a new Capo Projects team member, or leader, I should say, in Sheila Miller, joining the team. Is it next week?
Yes.
So it'd be nice to have her on board to help continue to lead the team that we've got in place doing good work. So that's it from Capital Projects. I don't know if other members want to add anything? All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. Next, we're gonna go to the Committee on Budget Audit and Finance, and that's Commissioner Reed, who's on WebEx today.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, fellow commissioners and director and DCHA staff and the public. So we had our last Committee on Budget Audit and Finance meeting last week where I think if you heard in a little bit of the discussion at the top of the meeting, we've been very focused on getting caught up on our annual audits. So we're very pleased that the DCHA team is making progress in that area. And as was reported out earlier, it looks like we are on track to complete our FY '22 audit towards the end of April and the '23 audit towards the end of June. And then we will be caught up. So we're very excited about that. We also received, as we do at each meeting, an update on the current federal and local funding landscape from our new CFO, Heather Mueller. So we are very excited to meet and hear from her as well as any issues that are occurring in the execution of the current year budget, which there were not at this time. We spent a little bit of time discussing what Commissioner Murphy alluded to, which is just how we need to make sure to tighten up our processes so that things can move more smoothly through the CFO and more quickly. And the DCHA team is on that. And it's helpful that Commissioner Clay is also part of the Budget Audit and Finance team. And then, of course, we received the monthly report from Director Cooper on the status of any audits and investigations. And nothing, I think, alarming or notable to report at this time. The last thing I would mention is we too are in the process of developing that one-pager that Commissioner Murphy mentioned. I actually just got to take a look at a draft today for our committee. So I'll be sharing that with my fellow committee members and look forward to the feedback and ongoing work. And unless there are any questions, Chairman, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Reed.
Chairman, I just wonder if maybe at our next meeting, maybe for our next board book, maybe if each of the committees is done with this one-pager, if we could circulate them all so that we all can sort of see the ones that we may not, you know, I think it'd be a helpful exercise for us to just be able to see each of the committees.
Okay, because there may be some overlap and things that we need to work out.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Reed. And this time, I'm gonna call on Commissioner Jones, who chairs the Committee on Operations and Administrative Services. And I believe as part of their last meeting, they focused on a couple of the resolutions that are only generated today, Resolution 2401 and 2402. So I ask Commissioner Jones to begin.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Sheila because I wasn't present at the last meeting. So she'll give a recap of our meeting that was held in December.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Good afternoon, everybody. Yep, we did review all three resolutions. And we'll get into the details later. So I'll just summarize like two of the like really important sentiments that came out of our committee meeting. One was the importance of advancing. There was a lot of gratitude to Director Pettigrew for proposing a strategy that accelerates the Urgent Needs Campaign. I think we're all on the same page that that's absolutely critical. And then the second sentiment was a request for monthly updates, that this wasn't a carte blanche. You know, that we need feedback and updates related to the procurement activities as they're happening on a monthly basis, the budget and any changes in scope. So we'll get into the details of that later when we're discussing the resolutions in detail. There were many other topics that came up after we discussed the resolution. So I want to make sure everybody's on the same page about like the importance of these additional topics to our committee and what we would like to see. So I already mentioned improving voucher utilization, that we were looking for the same level of urgency and focus on voucher utilization, especially in terms of streamlining the processes, whether it's for eligibility determination, whether it's for processing the landlord applications when they come in. So all of the steps and pieces in the process really need to be streamlined and stepped up to the extent that we can eliminate or consolidate its steps. Like those are the sorts of things that we would very much like to see. The other topic of issue was related to the homeless preference and the waitlist, the A-COP. I've indicated that it's really important that we revisit that topic that, you know, myself in particular had made important concessions last year. I don't think those were warranted. So I want that back on the table. I would like for us to discuss in reinstituting the homeless preference for the waitlist. Another area that we have not really discussed here on the board, but that is near and dear to my heart, is preventing deaths related to the opioid epidemic. This is a significant factor in homeless services. And as I learn more and I study more, what I'm learning is that the majority of fatal and near fatal overdoses happen in residencies and that the D.C. Housing Authority, particular properties, are on the list of the properties that DBH is like paying attention to. And so I think it becomes really important for us to think about how we are advancing harm reduction for our residents and tenants, whether we're proactively distributing and making available naloxone and Narcan as part of how we are managing the properties as part of the people that are the staff, the D.C. Housing Authority staff that are supporting these properties. We had a robust conversation because Director Pettigrew also reflected back that drug-related activities, you know, at the properties are also really big concern and are, you know, another aspect of the opioid epidemic that we're confronting. So and then last but not least was data related to rent reasonableness. I am so like, so it speaks to, we made a request, we're getting the data. Thank you so much. I highlighted that the Interagency Council on Homelessness has a Housing Solutions Committee. And, you know, my constituents are also looking for that update in that forum as well. And I'm working very closely with Hamara Gabrias to like realize that. So I invite you, Director Pettigrew, to come to that meeting and to support that presentation. So we talked about a lot of stuff at that meeting. It was a very robust meeting. I wanted to make sure that everybody that's on the call like gets a chance to hear all of the different things that we covered and brought to the attention of the director.
Okay, with that, we will segue into the resolutions. Resolution 2401, which is to authorize modification to Resolution 0941 regarding giving the staff a little more flexibility in terms of contract modifications.
Good afternoon. Resolution-
Resolution 2401, the purpose of the resolution is to authorize the executive director, the contracting authority to award emergency contracts and modify current contracts. To revise Resolution 0941 that limits modifications to the lesser of 10% or $100,000 for one year, not to exceed a maximum of $14 million. And so what brings us to this resolution today is that we need more flexibility in the procurement process to be able to adequately meet the emergencies that currently face the agency. In 2009, Resolution 0941 was adopted, which basically set the board realized that we do need flexibility in the procurement process and that sometimes, once a resolution is approved, that we do need to modify it. And so Resolution 0941 was adopted to allow that flexibility up to the lesser of the 10% or $100,000. Right now, the agency has a current crisis with our vacancy rate. We have approximately 75% of our portfolio that is that we have a 25% vacancy rate. And so because of that vacancy rate, DCHA in and of itself, we're out of compliance with our move to work plan. And that HUD has essentially determined that we are in a crisis. So we have to respond. We have a responsibility to provide quality, affordable housing to our residents. We have a responsibility to make sure that we're making continuous improvement on, continuous improvement with that occupancy rate. So as a result, we put together a plan to get, to actually do and make improvements with our occupancy over the next 15 months. Our timeline is to make significant improvements by May of 2024. To do so, we've identified major categories where there are either supplies, equipment, or consulting services that are needed to be able to provide all of the supplies and services that we need to make the improvements in the vacant unit terms. The categories are vacant unit make-ready services. So those are the actual repairs in the units. Consulting services, different vendors to provide services that support that effort. Environmental services, that's lead and mold contractors. Maintenance operating supplies. So that's all of the supplies that are needed to put, to go into the unit to make the necessary repairs, as well as preventative maintenance services. Those are your ongoing HVAC, air conditioning, fire, things like that. That's preventative maintenance services. So based across all of those categories, we anticipate, we identified all of the contracted services that are in place, as well as prior contracting authority that the agency had, but has since expired. And we identified a not-to-exceed amount of $14 million. And we are asking the board to support us in this effort in granting us a one-year modification to Resolution 0941 to grant us through this resolution the authority to move forward with awarding the emergency contracts and/or modify current contracts to be able to be responsive to address our vacant needs, vacant unit terms.
So just to be clear, so this, looking at Director Pettigrew, this is all for the Urgent Needs Campaign, right? To be able to more quickly turn over these units and get them occupied?
Right. Remember now, urgent needs for me is everything. When I first got here, urgent needs was confined to a set number of units. But given the situation, the utilization, the concerns that HUD expressed, as well as Attorney General, urgent needs is everything for me. Everything is urgent. So just so you know, that's my definition of urgent.
So, okay. Commissioner Sola, do you, on behalf of the committee, did you want to talk about this resolution? And I believe the committee is prepared to recommend to the full board for adoption of this resolution.
Yes, and in fact, we talked about these two, their two resolutions. Sometimes it's actually easier.
2401 is one, and then which Ms. Allen just talked about, 2402.
Yes, and we reviewed the two resolutions together, especially because there was an exhibit that detailed the...
The list of contractors and...
Yes, yes, the additional capacity needed. And then in some cases, because the, it's not a contract modification, there was, there were specific line items that were highlighted for us to take a look at and review. So we did, we went line item by line item. We wanted to understand the nature of the services that were being procured and to also understand what the current status of the activities were so that we could have a sense of like what it is that the D.C. Housing Authority is asking for. We also went into that same line of inquiry at the Capital Projects team. So I also want to make room for Commissioner Murphy to jump in and provide feedback from that perspective as well. We were, for the commissioners that were attending, we were on the same page that this was a critical investment that needed to be made. And we were also on the same page that we do want monthly updates. And the monthly updates that we are talking about are related to transparency, recognizing that as board members, we don't want to be in the details of the actual procurement activities. We don't want to be accused of meddling with procurement-related activities. We want to, we definitely, and we want to respect the autonomy of the director and his team, but that we do need to understand how things are proceeding, what kind of cost controls are in place, if the scope of work is changing and it looks different than what's being described and what is proposed here. We talked about how important it is to reflect that back in the status updates on a monthly basis. We do recognize that the large board meeting might not be the appropriate place for those monthly updates, but we want to make sure that they're happening either in our committee or in the Committee for Capital Projects. So we do, we do need to identify the right place. Maybe actually both committees do take a look at that on a monthly basis, but those were some of the important parameters that we wanted to make sure were in place.
Commissioner Murphy.
So that was well said. I guess the way I think that I looked at it, and I think we discussed in committee, is that there's a couple of different board imperatives that are in tension here that we want to acknowledge. Is that, number one, we want to make sure that all our residents are living in conditions that are really safe and appropriate and meeting the highest standards. At the same time, we want to make sure our occupancy rates are high. And at the same time, part of our responsibility as a board is to provide oversight and kind of a check to the staff team to make sure that contracting is being done correctly and that it's been, you know, completely appropriate and above board. There's a little bit of tension there, because that latter goal sometimes can take a long time to get through. And I know there's a lot of procurement processes that sometimes hold us back from being able to deliver on some pretty basic, important services to our residents. So I think we view this resolution as a way of sort of trying to find a middle ground in all those imperatives that allows each one to be maximally achieved while not holding back some of the other imperatives. And so I think we made some helpful, we worked with the staff team, who was really a great partner to us on this. In terms of making a couple tweaks to the resolution, we added this reporting requirement. It was really helpful that the staff has given us a table of kind of the contractors that they're thinking of likely amending and maybe putting some more resources too. So there's transparency there. So I think I am at a place where I'm feeling good that we found the right sweet spot here of maximizing transparency, but at the same time, allowing the staff to work as quickly as they can. And I guess the last point I would make is, we as a board have been pretty clear over the last couple of months that we didn't feel like urgent needs was moving fast enough. And the staff has come back and said, we agree with you. Here's what we need to do what you say you want us to do. And if we're going to be a responsible board, I don't think we can ask them, we can't require them to move faster and not give them the tools to move faster. So I feel really good about where we've ended up, and our committee felt the same way. And we'll hope that the board will adopt it today.
Commissioner Reed, you had a comment?
Thank you. I agree with all the discussion happening. And two, you know, I'll be meeting with our new CFO later this week. And one of the data points I was going to ask that we get regular updates on in our meetings is how the spending is going on this. So hearing that each committee now wants something, I just wanted to say maybe the three committees could agree on what a regular report would look like that could go to all of us, so we're not having the agency have to create several different things. But I think I look forward to that discussion and then also the work the agency needs to do to get movement on this. Thank you.
The committee, and I just want to get clarity on the record for it, is I think there were a couple potential engagements that we looked at, where we had a contract that we were likely to amend, and it might push us over $1 million. And I asked the question, do we know whether that will trigger council review? Because obviously, we, this is somewhat new to us, because, no, sorry, we're spending federal dollars. So that's right, okay, all right. But so I just, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, there's no issue there, that we've got that all buttoned up?
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. That's all I needed to hear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So given that, I'm going to ask for a resolution to approve, first of all, Resolution 2401.
Make a motion.
Motion, I'm sorry, I said motion, to approve Resolution 2401.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on Resolution 2401.
Okay. Commissioner Jenny Reed? Yes. Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight, no, seven, I'm sorry, seven commissioners that approve, so you can move this resolution forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then let's move to Resolution 2402. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2402?
Motion.
Motion, it says second.
Second.
Second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote for Resolution 2402.
Okay.
Can you hear me? This is Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner Harris, I didn't know that you joined.
Yeah, I've been on the phone. I can't get into the link. But I'll go ahead and wait for the second roll call.
Okay. For Resolution 2402, Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenny Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Chair member Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight commissioners. This resolution can move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next resolution, Resolution 2403, and this is to amend the bylaws of the D.C. Housing Authority. So we discussed this at last, the last board meeting in December. And I know this was discussed at both the Operations Committee and the Capital Projects Committee. And I believe both committees are recommending approval. And I'd like to give a shout out and thanks to Commissioners Clay and Murphy for their work in doing a detailed review of the bylaws. And basically, what this is doing is updating the bylaws to reflect some of the changes that were made to the D.C. Public Housing Authority's law when the legislation for the STAR Board, the current board, was put into effect. So basically, that's what it does. And again, this was discussed at the last meeting, and I think we're ready to move forward with this. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2403 to amend the bylaws with the DCHA. So move? Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote to approve 2403.
Okay. Commissioner Teresa Sella?
Yes.
Commissioner Jim Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Chris Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronnie Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Melissa Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jenny Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
You have eight guesses, the resolution can move forward.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is something, again, we started a couple of meetings ago, which I refer to as Commissioner's Time. And this is just an opportunity for commissioners to bring up any issues, concerns that are on their mind. Commissioner Sella?
Thank you. During the public comment period, it struck me, the call for meeting at different locations or having our meetings be accessible struck me. I really enjoyed the listening sessions that we did last year. I don't know whether that was a requirement only for our first year on the board, but I do, if for the whole board, because I don't want to impose that kind of a requirement on everybody on the board, but I would greatly appreciate being able, you know, that was such an important and critical function. If we could host one or two, if not four, listening sessions like we did last year, I would, I will attend, and I would personally appreciate.
So I think that's a good idea, particularly given the fact that we're not doing in-person board meetings. So I've mentioned a couple of times that I personally would like to see us go back to having in-person board meetings. I know we did that prior to the pandemic shutdown, and then we went to all virtual. My understanding is that we're having some logistical issues in terms of being able to do an in-person board meeting and have the appropriate equipment and so forth and the space to actually invite the public in. So in lieu of being able to do that, and I'm not sure how long that will take for us to move to that level, to have in-person board meetings, but in lieu of not having in-person board meetings, I think the idea of the listening session is a good one that we can, you know, arrange to, as we did last year, go out to a couple of the public housing developments and have a, well, I wouldn't be a meeting, but an opportunity to hear from the residents in terms of what some of the issues are.
Yeah. I appreciated the afternoon hours, you know, like at a time when people are at the property. And then like meeting our residents where they are, I think is also really powerful, instead of always asking residents to come out and meet us, you know.
And in the future, obviously, we've been walking the properties, so make sure you guys get the schedules. I know several city council members asked for the schedules as well to walk with me on the properties, because that gives you a really good feel too.
So I'm glad you brought up Director. One of the things Director Pettigrew has been doing, as been mentioned a couple of times today, is actually going out and walking the properties and meeting with the residents. And I've been able to do a couple of those with him, and I've found that very helpful and eye-opening for me, just in terms of seeing what the properties look like. We talk a lot here about the condition of the properties and, you know, the need for doing upgrades and repairs and so forth. But seeing it in person puts it in a really different light. And then secondly, the other thing that Director Pettigrew has been doing is meeting with some of the city council members to talk to them about what issues or concerns they have with the Housing Authority. And I've been able to sit in, also sit in on a couple of those. And so again, I think they've been helpful. So again, Director Pettigrew, if you could, when those meetings are scheduled, let the entire board know. And then if any of the board members have time in their schedule to make those meetings, I think, again, it could be... I think, again, it could be helpful for you.
You could, well, you could.
Commissioner Dickerson?
I would like to recommend a little, you know, the meetings that we had last year, there's a lot of anger and a lot of emotion, which is understandable, given what we've been, what this agency's been going through, had gone through, et cetera. And that's a good thing in and of itself, just to have people to vent and to put out their feelings, et cetera. But I would like to get clear, what are we trying, you know, we are going to a listening session, but is there more than just that for people to get together and just complain and vent? And then that's it? I think we need something, I would like to take it to one more level. And now that you're meeting with them, maybe we can structure it so that, you know, some of the issues that you're, that everybody's got could be raised indirectly, you know, more productively dealt with.
So when we do walk the properties, we walk with the staff as well as the resident leaders. And we create a list of all the items that have been shared with us, whether it be repairs, whether it be other things they may want. And so we have a checklist of all of the properties. And what I do is I sort of browbeat my staff every week to give me an update on what's been fixed and what hasn't. And then, and so now that I've scheduled some, now I'm going to start doing random pop-ups to see whether or not what we said we were supposed to do, that we're doing. So that way, it shows the residents that we're getting things done, number one. Number two is one thing for me to announce that I'm coming. It's another thing for me to just show up and make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do and follow it up on certain things. So, and that's sort of my way of making sure that our staff are accountable and that the residents are seeing progress, so.
What do you recommend in the larger meeting, when the, we have a listening session or whatever we want to call it? You know, do you take it from the practical level? Okay, this is what we're, we have learned and we're working on, and this is where we are? Or, and then open up for, you know, comments and people to share their feelings and thoughts and whatever. I just think that it was helpful. I do think it's helpful for people to get their feelings out and to, there was no problem with it for me. But if we could focus it a little bit more on what we need to get done and is getting done and where it isn't yet getting done, that would be very helpful.
I would like to make some additions. You know, especially as we're thinking about how we're going to reposition properties, what our development strategy is going to be. Or we are moving towards like budget formulation for the district. Maybe it's the same kind of process on your end. I would actually like be interested in involving the residents in some of the trade-offs that we are actually juggling, right? Like, can we put these important questions in front of our residents so that they can be a part of the decision-making process and the planning-making, you know, the planning process from a longer viewpoint than just what is it that's right in front of you is a problem? You know, very often, we have to make trade-offs. We can't do everything that we want to do. And so I would, I would love to get their perspective on some of the key areas of trade-off, especially as you're developing a strategy for things like properties.
So just so you know, that is my MO. We did it in Alexandria, we did it in New Orleans. One day I learned, we learned is that, and I've heard this from the residents when I first arrived, was that the housing authority was making decisions and not including the residents in the conversation.
Yeah.
And that's just backwards to me. I mean, I need the residents buying, number one. It's their community, number two, and they should have a say-so, number three. And so we meet with people on the front end, not the back end, to talk about the plans, to get their feedback, provide them with FQs so that they understand what the answers are, what the concerns are. And they have something from us that shows that we have that commitment to involving them the entire time. And that has allowed me, in both places, to be really successful in moving projects, particularly through the process. Because especially in Alexandria, when I mobilized the residents, informed them of what was going on, put them on the front end of everything. By the time it came to go through the bar review, because some people were challenging the designs of the building, and I walked in with seventy residents strong into the chamber. And they looked around and were like, wow. So I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think it's extremely important that we gave residents on the front end. I know it hasn't been done in the past as well. We need to know how to communicate better with the residents in terms of sitting down with them, walking them through certain things, and explaining it to them. But again, their input is their community. They're going to be coming back to it, and they should have some say-so on how it all goes down. So, and you'll see that from me as we start to reposition. I'll be the voice upfront, talking about where we're going, because they want to hear from me anyway. They want to hear my commitment to them as the ED saying, hey, you have a right to return. Your eligibility is not going to be a fee, you know? Also, hey, we want you a part of the design team. We want you, at some point, to help pick the development director, I mean, development partner, you know? Because these are people that are going to be rebuilding your community, and we want them involved from A to Z. And so that's the plan.
I think that would be a great meeting. And just to have the board there to hear it or to be a part of it, that would be perfect. I mean, takes it from the subjective and all the other to something even focused on us getting, moving down the road.
Yes. I think, as the Director said, you're going to see a big difference in terms of how we move forward with the repositioning of our properties. You may recall, for some of you, particularly who were on the previous board, the advocates had come forward with something, I think it was called Rad Dunn Right? It was something like that, which talked about the process of including residents in that whole repositioning activity. So I think, clearly, I, as a chairing board, am committed to that. I think I could speak for, oh, that we're committed to doing that. And you've heard the Director today and in other situations say he's committed to that. So I think it's a matter of getting that overall portfolio strategy in place and then going out. And I'm, I don't know if it's a big meeting, Commissioner Dickerson says the way to do that, or it has to be done property by property, because each one is going to be a little different.
And so I'll just add, like, the listening sessions that we'll have, you know, that's going to help to build the recovery plan. So as you just said, it's probably going to be more property by, property or clusters versus the one large, because hearing from the residents is going to help build the recovery plan that's coming out.
Can I, I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to ask about the ACOB and the admin plan, and Commissioner Sella brought this up earlier. So we approved these, you know, a year-ish ago, and then I think I've approved two subsequent extensions. And I've always been a little, I think I even remember when we approved the first extension, because I remember saying, are we approving this because we're going to revisit some of the decisions that we made? Or are we approving this just because we didn't have a chance to finalize it? And I'm kind of not sure what, we sort of ended up in kind of gray area there, but we've done it now twice. I'm concerned that it's not completely done yet. I'm concerned that we continue to get feedback from the advocacy community. We kind of either need to decide one way or another. If we decide that we want to revisit some of their, the decisions we made before based on their feedback, that's fine. If there are reasons we can't and shouldn't, that's okay too. But I guess I just want to make sure that we're on a good path to sort of get to finality there so that we don't just keep kind of, I think we approved the last extension in December. It was sort of like, okay, it's going to expire, so we got to keep it going, as opposed to sort of having a thoughtful plan to get it to the finish line. So I'm just curious to know what your thoughts are and how we do that.
Before you respond, let me just add onto that. And that is, I know I was in one meeting with HUD, but I know you've had several meetings with HUD. And at one point, you were waiting to get feedback from HUD on what was submitted back in the December, November, whenever it was. So what is, what is the status in terms of feedback from HUD?
None. But, yeah, yeah. But we meet with the field office every Tuesday. And so I've been sort of strategically dealing with various issues, because we're trying to tick some stuff off the list.
This is closing the findings from there.
Yeah, yeah. And then also dealing with five issues, five items that they sent us. And so I'm going to circle back, but I wanted to make sure I gave something first before I drew the line and said, okay, now, I really need you to close this out, because we do need to get a closeout. And I'm willing to revisit some of the concerns and issues, particularly homelessness piece, right?
Yeah.
So what we put, what we talking to Laurel, we talk to her every week.
Laurel's the staff person.
Yeah. So when we revisit that with her relatively soon, because I want to get this done. I want her off my plate.
Yeah, amen. Yes. And on the homelessness, we were having a brief conversation about this before. I'm certainly open to revisiting it, and I generally, on all these issues, I defer to Commissioner Sella, because I think she knows it so much better than I do. I just would want to make sure that we thought through, this isn't going to impact the pace at which we can fill units. That's my only, I just sort of want to double check that we've thought that through and figure out that if they're going to come into, if people with a home voucher, because they're homeless, come into the system, that we thought, what's the right moment for that to happen so that it doesn't hinder our ability to fill units as quickly as possible?
It shouldn't. I mean, based on what I've seen from experience standpoint, I'm surprised they pulled it off. Because everybody, I was telling Doug Schirrmann, everybody claims homelessness in the application, you know, so.
I would, I would also like to share, though, that last year, as part of the conversation around removing the homeless preference, we've worked to get a data sharing agreement in place. We actually did a data bump of HMIS and the waiting list. We identified and thought through, are there ways that we could support people in the application process despite the fact that we cannot directly talk to folks? We don't have the appropriate release of information. So we can only try to gain an understanding from a population level, you know, not from an individual, person-by-person level. So it is absolutely imperative that we support people who are truly experiencing homelessness, because it is very difficult to manage the waitlist process when you don't have a stable address and, and there's no place to send you your information or it's an outdated place. So I do want more strategic and focused conversation around that. I do want to be a partner. I know we talk a lot about like, what's the place of the board versus, in terms of like leaning on you for the day-to-day implementation and the specific strategies that we are, we're waiting for you usually to come back to us with strategies. But this is an area that's like really critical to me, that I've spent a lot of time and have a lot of experience working, you know, with DC, in partnership with DC Housing Authority staff. And so I do apologize if I, if I am a little bit eager and I have like very specific action items that I want to see play out in this regard.
So.
I seriously, I really do.
Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Harris, on WebEx, do you have any comments, concerns that you want to bring up?
Not a comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, then the next board.
Commissioner Burbidge, I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Just first, I wanted to thank Director Pettigrew and Deputy Director and the staff for coming out. You hear a lot of noise because they are on my property doing wonderful things. And I am very, very appreciative. I have heard back from a few residents in different properties, and they have all thumbs up. So today is just only good news. And I agree with Commissioner Sella, with the homeless population, it's a very sensitive area, and we have to be aware. I don't know what HUD considers homeless, but I was told if my name not on the lease, I'm homeless. So I, I mean, that's a way that some people look at it, you know, they tell, sir, they might stay here, they may stay there. But I just want to commend everyone on the wonderful work they are doing. That's all I had to say, and thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burbidge.
Miss you.
Yeah, we missed you. We didn't know what you were going to come on. Okay. So the next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March the 13th, 2024, at 1:00 P.M. It's going to be held via WebEx. Information regarding reviewing or participating in the meeting can be found at the D.C. DCHousing.org. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I mean, the meeting is adjourned at 2:49 P.M. And thank everyone for your participation. Board members, public at large, residents, thank you.
Ms. Hardman Jones, are you there? Ms. Hardman Jones?
Hey, NRG3, this is Alison Berto with DCHA. Is there something you needed to share with Shanita Hardiman Jones?
Uh, no, I just wanted to get a, just a quick roll call on which bishop.
I'm sorry, can you, who's this I'm speaking with?
This is Mike Morris, the court reporter.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize you were in on two numbers. And you need what? Say it again.
Uh, I just, I'm just going over. As I have it, only two who are absent are Ms. Blackman and Ms. J.
I'll get her. This is Barbara Oud speaking. I'll get Shanita.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, Mike. So I'll let Barbara and Shanita.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. I was, I'll try and keep my voice up sometimes, this laptop.
Sure, the mic doesn't pick it up. Perfect, no problem. All right. Barbara and Shanita will take care of you. Thanks for being patient.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, are you still there? Hold on one second, let me get my volume together. Mike, are you still there? Uh-oh, for some reason, I can't hear. Yeah, I might have to just give him my cell phone. Yeah, I was still muted. Ms. Oud? Oh, excuse me. Uh-oh. Mr. Morris, are you still with me? Ms. Oud, I'm trying to sign off, I keep clicking, hello?
Mike, Shanita's coming, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Give me one second, I have a couple of people still on. I'm going to
Absolutely.
Get these folks off.
All right.
You know what? Just hit the machine, cancel the job. I, I didn't, I didn't see eight commissioners.
Thank you, Barbara, I'm going to take you out, okay?
Sure, no problem. I can actually leave.
Actually, if you can exit, that'd be great.
That's what I'm doing now, thank you.
No problem. So. Okay, still have Barbara on. Okay, Mike, I'm here. I was thinking that Barbara was going to exit. For some reason, she's still on, but you have any questions?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I have a couple. The absent commissioners.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right.
Oh, hold on one second. Hold on one second. I'm sorry.